Good evening and welcome to the May 1st, 2023 Cabarrus County Board of Education Work Session. I'd like to recognize our Teacher of the Year, Ms. Angie McLean, our Board members Keisha Sandage, Sam Tredaway, Tim Fur, our Superintendent Dr. John Kapicki, our Vice Chair Rob Walter, Board Members Laura Lindsay, Pam Escobar, and our Board Clerk Kristy Williams. So I will move to 1.01 and call this meeting to order. We'll move to 2.01 and we will stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. We'll move to 3.01 to adopt the agenda. I need a motion to adopt the agenda as presented. So move. Need a second?
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Lindsay, a second by Mr. Walter. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. We will now move to 4.01, Board Chair Comments. Our Board of Education took a trip to Raleigh last Wednesday where we met with our state legislators. We took a tour of the Legislative Campus. We sat in a Rules Committee session and saw firsthand the process for bill presentations and voting. We had the opportunity to have discussions with our legislators about House Bill 219, the Charter School Omnibus Bill, which if passed will defer additional funding from Cabarrus County School District Budget, which will be detrimental to the future success of the district. The Board of Education will highly recommend those in our community to contact their state legislators and ask them to oppose this bill. The Board would like to thank Dr. Kelly Protsch for coordinating our trip last Wednesday. With that, we will move to 4.02 in our Superintendent Comments with Dr. John Kapicki.
Thank you, Mrs. Adcock. I'd like to echo the same sentiments that Mrs. Adcock just pointed out and commend our Board and Dr. Protsch for arranging our trip to Raleigh. It was definitely very productive. We were able to see Senator Newton, Representative Baker, Representative Crutchfield. It was very productive, allowed us some opportunities to meet with them and advocate for our school system and our students here in the Cabarrus County Schools. And again, I'd like to thank the Board for taking the time out of their extraordinarily busy days and taking that trip to Raleigh. Just again shows the commitment of the Board as a whole and the work they're doing on behalf of our students and our community, so we do appreciate that. I'd also like to remind everyone and invite everyone to the Cabarrus County Schools Student and Family Mental Wellness Forum, which will be held from 5:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. at J.M. Robinson High School on May 3rd, which is this Wednesday. The evening will feature keynote speaker Dr. Sonia Richardson, who is a subject matter expert on youth mental health. We will also have a panel discussion consisting of Cabarrus County Schools' mental health professionals across the district. And after the discussion, all of the attendees are invited to visit with our 30-plus registered community mental wellness and resource providers onsite to learn about and connect with supportive services right here in Cabarrus County. There'll be food trucks onsite and activities for school-aged children while parents connect and engage in a conversation. And I'd like to thank Dr. Ross' leadership and especially Amy Jewell for putting this together. I think they've done a great job to continue to advocate for our kids and to speak to some of those mental health concerns that we all know we have and that are prevalent in our school system, so I thank them for that. Also tomorrow, the Cabarrus County Schools' Parent Satisfaction Engagement Survey will kick off. An email will go out to all of the parents inviting them to participate in this anonymous survey, and the survey link will also be available on our district and school webpages, and they will be able to access this throughout the month of May. As we tell parents in the Connect Ed that their voice matters and we want to hear from them, our Board of Education and district leaders value the input our parents give us and assist us in helping to make some of the decisions that we make, and we want to work to continually improve the Cabarrus County Schools. So this will be the second time we've done this. The first one was December of 2021. This is when we're going to do it. Now we're kind of in a good pattern. May of the end of the year of each school year, we will do this survey to look at our benchmark data and see kind of where we're at and hopefully we're making some continuous improvement along those lines. Before I hand it over to the -- there are two presentations this evening. John Basileis is going to give us a presentation that was recently given by the County of Central Cabarrus, and John will speak to that. And we're going to look at some of that substance abuse issues that are prevalent, and our Board continues to advocate for information on that. I'd like to thank Keisha Sandage for continuing to advocate on behalf of our students as the rest of the Board is, but Mrs. Sandage has had several conversations with me about getting this information out to parents, so I thank her for her advocacy on this. Also, I'd like to report to the community that there was a book brought to my attention called Sex Plus: Learning, Loving, and Enjoying Your Body by Lacey Green. This book was brought to my attention. It came from one of the libraries in our high schools, and I think it was Wes Cabarrus High School, I believe it was, when the school opened. I believe this was a book that was among thousands of books. When the school opened, it was placed into our library, and it wasn't appropriately reviewed. But I can tell you that according to our Policy 3210 and under my authority to remove things that have no educational value, I firmly believe that this book does not fulfill the educational goals of the school district. It's been removed. We will put this up there as we said we would last year during the Literature Review Committee. We start the new process and updated the Policy 3210. It's here for the Board to review. I think you'll find some of the things in here just inappropriate for the educational process here in Cabarrus County Schools. I don't take this responsibility lightly, but there are things in here that just, they just don't flat out fulfill the educational goals. So I just informed the public of that and our Board that that has taken place. And then lastly, as I said, John Basileis will present this evening. Sarah Reeves is also, was also going to present in our Superintendent Comments tonight, and she may. Right now Sarah and Carol Herndon are at the county meeting presenting a piece of our budget that needs to be approved tonight, and they had to be there to represent us. So if Sarah doesn't come back in a timely fashion, we will have her presented at the business meeting next week, as long as we're all in agreement with that. And I think that is all I have for this evening. So thank you very much. Mr. Basileis?
Thank you for having me here tonight. It's my pleasure to speak to you about the results of the Youth Substance Use Survey for Cabarrus County Schools. This is a survey that we do annually. We do this every year, and I'm going to go through some of the processes of the survey as well as some of the findings. I don't, it's been a while since I've been up here, so I forgot that you got a nice new Advancer since I've been gone, so didn't see it, but there it is. All right. So some of the key findings were that most of our young people in Cabarrus County Schools, in Cabarrus County in general, about 87% are living drug-free. Overall, the use trends for alcohol, marijuana, and combustible traditional cigarettes have been trending down over the past six years. The leading substance chosen by youth has been alcohol at 8%. We can talk more about why that is. And that Cabarrus County High School students have a relatively low rate of substance use when compared to the national average. And we also, this is a very important thing for us to talk about, is what are the key protective factors for substance use, including parental disapproval, peer disapproval, perception of risk, and limits of access? Youth were considerably less likely to use when these protective factors were present, so we'll talk a little bit about that in our time. And then finally, living drug-free is associated with school success, including higher grades and attendance. All right, so by the way, this research was conducted by Dr. Drew Reynolds, who is a Principal Consultant for Common Good Data. This funding for this survey is accessed through the ABC Grant. The long and the short of it is that there's a North Carolina General Statute, North Carolina General Statute 18B 805H, which essentially says that funds that would be profit for a local alcohol border control have to be used for either research, treatment, or education on substance abuse. Okay? So this, the research that went into this did not cost our taxpayers' funds other than what they spent on alcohol through ABC. The survey has been done anonymously since 2014, and the data is collected online but administered in-person by CCS. Essentially, we asked for a sample of about 5% of 16 schools. Those schools are all middle and high schools, okay? Parents are notified prior to their students participating in any such survey, and they have the opportunity to opt out. And the survey was administered in November and December of last year. So now we'll go over some of the findings. So the 30-day use data, this is a big matrix, but I think what we really want to bring your attention to here is that most youth in grades 6 through 12 in Cabarrus County are living drug-free, okay? And so you can see a comparison of middle school and high school. Obviously, in high school, the numbers increase when compared to middle school. I don't think that's very surprising. What I think does have our attention is when you look at some of the national YRBS, NC YRBS numbers, Cabarrus County tends to be lower on many of those statistics than the state national average around the YRBS for similar items. This is a trend over time, over the last, you know, six or seven years. I think if you look at that gray line for vaping, you can see that in 2016, that was not a very high number. And then you can see in 2019, that number jumps to about 1 in 8 students reporting the use of vapes, and then back down to around 6.5%. You can see that also, it looks kind of blue on my screen, the blue line for alcohol is the one that ends in 2022 at 8% is consistently, tends to be the largest of the percentages that we pay attention to. That's the most reported substance that's used by young people. Now, when people ask me sometimes, and I'll say, "What is the substance that young people use the most?", the answer is the one that they can get their hands on the most, right? And so alcohol becomes the most accessible, right? So that really is what we're talking about in terms of substance use for young people, and I think that's why you see alcohol as still being the largest percentage. This is an item related to vaping. If you used a vape, what did you use? And for those who said they used a vape, about 72% said they vaped nicotine, and then about 44% said they vaped some form of THC, okay? And then the next item asked if you used marijuana, how did you use it? I think a lot of parents think traditionally in terms of smoking marijuana, but there are certainly the opportunity to vape and also go through edibles. And you can see that the numbers for smoking is still the highest, but vaping and edibles are still, are certainly a rising concern. Prescription drugs, even though it's a small percentage, even though it's a small percentage of students, it's around 4% who endorsed items saying that they use prescription drugs, these really need our attention, right? And so you can see that the pain medications, the hydrocodone, the oxy, the Vicodin, that's around 43%. So if you're in that 4% who said you used some form of prescription drugs, around 43% were for those pain meds, and around 1/3, 29%, were for the ADHD, this more stimulant, Adderall, Ritalin types of pills. Now let's talk about the importance of protective factors. Risk of harm, peer disapproval, and parent disapproval. So risk of harm is really important because if you don't think something's going to be hurtful to you, you're far more likely to use it, right? This is why the Surgeon General went on such an aggressive campaign decades ago to bring the smoking tobacco numbers down with great success. As they made, as people's awareness of the risk of harm increases, generally, use decreases. And so this is an important thing. We really want our young people to understand that there are risks associated with these things, and we have to really emphasize those. And so you can see that the risk of having five or more drinks of alcohol once or twice a week, you know, that is a relatively low number for this group, right? And that goes back to the idea that young people are using it more alcohol. Is this starting to make some sense, that you see these things connected? And the lowest one we saw, the lowest use rate we saw was around tobacco products, around smoking. Well, you can see that that's still viewed as highly risky, so therefore it's one of those things that's less used, okay? All right. This next item talks about the risk of harm. So if you saw that something was risky, you were far less likely to use a substance. So for example, let's look at the first one, use a prescription drug not prescribed to you. If you saw that as a great risk, that sort of blue band, your use rate tended to be around 2%, whereas if you didn't see it as very risky or no risk at all, you were four times more likely to use it. So your risk perception, young people's risk perception is really important here. Same you can see with marijuana, you know, vaping, and then what we'll call something akin to binge drinking for young people. So that's your, that's the young person's perception of risk. Next is peer disapproval. We hear a lot about peer pressure and about how much young people are influenced by their peers. This also works in the same way in terms of their disapproval for the use of substances. So if you're with a peer group who, their perception around the use of prescription drugs not prescribed to you, if you see that as a little bit wrong, you're, it's like 1 in 8. There's like a 1 in 8 chance that the person will use. Whereas if your friends have told you that they think it's very wrong, it's under 2%. It's around 1.5%. You see, so peer approval, peer disapproval of substances really matters. So we'll come back to this a little bit later when we say, "How do we mobilize this data?" We'll come back to that item about peer disapproval. Because as you can see, in each and every one of these, if your peers are disapproving of your use, your use tends to decrease, okay? All right. This next one is what I consider the most important one that we'll see tonight, and that's parent disapproval. Parents of young people, parents of teenagers, we believe that our opinions matter less and less to our kids and that they're not listening to us. And we have a lot of messages that validate that. Media messages, we have messages from our own kids that sometimes tell you they're not listening. We look at their nonverbals. But this data says something very different. It says your kids are listening. When parents have strong messages that the use of substances is wrong or very wrong, if there are very clear messages on that, that tends to be a protective factor. So let's go to the smoke marijuana once or twice a week, which is the second point you see down there. If parents say that's only a little bit wrong, or it's not wrong at all, then a young person's chances of endorsing that item as being something they do is about 1, is about a quarter, about 1 in 4. Whereas if parents say that it is very wrong, that number is 1 in 25. It's literally flipped, right? 25 times 4 is 100. So you've literally flipped that entire item based on parents' strong messages of disapproval. So if there are parents who are listening and watching this tonight, if you hear nothing else I see, if everything else is blah, 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 just listen to that. Your voice matters. Even when you think it doesn't matter, your voice matters, especially on this. You are the biggest protective factor for your children. Use context, so why youth say they use, not surprising to look cool. That's a very old thing that kids want to fit in, all people want to fit in. It's a way of looking cool. Having fun, okay? A lot of young people report being bored, and this is unfortunately a way that some people address that boredom. This one, I think, really needs your attention. Coping, right? This Board has paid a lot of attention to mental health needs of young people, and I'm really grateful for that. But it's important that we think about mental health and substance abuse as opposite sides of the same coin, right? To me, it's very much all about maladaptive coping strategies. People having overwhelming stress, great difficulty, maybe traumatic events, and they're coping the best they can. Those coping skills are sometimes arrested in them in that they'll sometimes use substances as a way of numbing, okay, or replacing. There's a famous researcher named Vincent Foletti, right, who talked about, he did a lot of research on substance abuse and childhood trauma and the impact of the lifespan. And Foletti famously said, "It's hard to get enough of something that almost works." And that's what substance abuse is. For a minute, this worked for just a minute, but it has really long-lasting consequences that are far more negative than perhaps I bargained for. Okay, guys, I'm going to keep moving. So access, this next one is just where young people say they're able to get substances, either through friends, taking it from home, getting it from parents, or accessing by way of parents, or other. Okay? And remember, these are just what the young people are saying to us in the survey. And then where do youth tend to use? Either at a friend's house, a park, at home alone. At home alone really has my attention a lot. That goes back to the coping item, right? What are we doing to engage our young people in healthy, adaptive ways of learning to deal with their stress? Okay? And then, once again, we really need parents to understand that you all, the messages you send are imperative. They really are the protective factors, and they all, so can be something of a gateway. Risky behaviors, these are some other risky behaviors that are just, they're not necessarily, they're connected to this survey, they're a part of this survey, but they're far less on the nose as the previous items. During the past 12 months, has anyone offered, sold, or given you an illegal drug, including someone else's prescription on school property? You can see that that number is 14%, okay? During the past 30 days, did you ride in a car or other vehicle driven by someone who's been drinking alcohol? You can see that in middle school and high school, those numbers balance out to around 11%. So these are very concerning data points for us, okay? And this statistic, I think, is just important as we pay attention to all of youth mental health and as we pay attention to peer messaging. We have to know where young people are. Social media, this is where they are. I mean, not surprisingly, they're not on Facebook, right? They're on TikTok, right? They're on Snapchat, they're on Instagram, that's where we can find them. If we want to reach young people with messages of protection, on bolstering adaptive coping strategies, the way to do it is to reach them through social media. So these are the recommendations that Dr. Drew Reynolds gave to us, to share positive messages. We want to emphasize that not everybody is using, right? Those that are using need our concern and need our attention. But the larger message is, if you're doing this to fit in, fitting in means not using, right? Promote healthy coping strategies. That's something we're working really hard on, as you all know. Alcohol, we want to expand parent-child communications, especially around, we don't, we're not good with that. It's not okay. Wait till you're 21, right? E-cigarettes, work on changing peer norms. The more we can do to get young people to understand that, you know, that vaping and smoking is really not good for them, that there really are problems associated with that, the more we can do on that, the better off we'll be. Marijuana, we want to emphasize that even though there's something of a seed change that's been going on nationally around marijuana use, there are still health risks. And then we want to monitor, continue to monitor prescription drug use, and we want to connect with youth on coping in isolation. And if we're going to reach them, the way to reach them is through their social media outlets. Okay, great. And again, I'm sharing the information that Dr. Drew Reynolds gave to us, and I'll do my best to represent his work to you all here tonight.
Is there any discussion Board members? Anyone want to ask a question? Ms. Escobar?
Thank you for sharing that.
Sure.
And I don't know if you can answer this question, and it's okay if you can't. But how realistic is it that kids are answering this? You know, do they trust it? Do they not trust it?
Yep. That's a great question. And that's the question that you always deal with any survey. How honest are people being about something that they're afraid, that they might be afraid they might get in trouble for? So when we talked to Dr. Reynolds about that, he said that that is a, that generally speaking, that we're pretty safe with that concern. We have good reason to believe that kids generally believe it's safe to be able to respond to that without there being consequences coming back to them. In other words, they're not signing in with their own, with their user ID number, so they do know that it's anonymous. It's so anonymous that I can't even tell you who took it, right? If you ask me what kids were in it, I don't even know. I don't even know what classrooms gave it because we want to keep the anonymity. But I think the fundamental part of your question is, the core of all such surveys is, how much can we trust that people entered it honestly? And the answer is, we just have to go with what they've told us.
I guess I just, is it safe to assume? And as soon as you assume, that's a problem. But is it safe to assume that it could be worse than what we're seeing? That's what I, you know--
It certainly could be worse than we're seeing. It certainly could be worse than we're seeing. Right? If you're saying that somebody had a fear that it might be monitored and that they might bias it in a way that it looked more favorable than it is. It certainly could be. Yes, it could. Yeah. I can't say it is, but it certainly could.
Ms. Lindsay?
So thank you for this presentation, and I definitely, so the last meeting that we had, I talked about, well, when we met with our group about how parents play such a pivotal role. So fentanyl absolutely terrifies me, so I have drilled it into my children's head probably daily. Narcan, I'm curious because as a parent, I feel like with this kind of pandemic of fentanyl, how are we, is our parents able to get narcan? Do we have it in the schools? I know that it's just one of those things where this is kind of our crisis of the time with that. So how do we deal with that?
Sure. So this Board, you all passed something allowing the use of emergency naloxone slash narcan in our schools. And so our SROs have narcan on them, our nurses have access to narcan, so we do have emergency narcan on campus. I will say that opioid overdose is very low among school-aged young people. Now, that said, we need naloxone, we need narcan on every campus, right? But it's a very, very low rate that you'd see on campus in that age group. In terms of parent access, I'd like to get back to you after I can contact one of my colleagues at the Health Alliance about that. That's something that we've been talking about for some time, about how we can create greater access for narcan and naloxone because it's absolutely necessary, in my opinion. I'm with you. I'm 100% with you. The more that we can have access to that, the more likely we are to save lives.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Any other discussion Board members? Ms. Sandage?
I asked a lot of questions during this presentation, but my question here, since you're presenting tonight, would be like, where do we go from here? Because while this suggests that not everybody is using, as you said yourself, kids are using. And it looks like there's a lot of access at home, but they are also able to access it at school, so that's where my question comes from. Where do we go from here? Where do we take the recommendations? What happens next? And you may not know the answer to that.
Well, yeah, I wish I had all the answers on that, but I think, so let's go to the start. The start, everything starts now. Everything starts person to person. And so the more we can get with parents to say, "Look, these messages of, these messages are important," right? The simple message of, "You're better than this. You don't need this. You know, you can do it. You are stronger than this." Those are, those messages are really important for our young people to understand that they can do difficult things, they can overcome their stressors, and that the use of these substances is really detrimental to them. It's harmful for them, and parents don't approve of that. So I think the more we can get parents to say that, the better off that we're going to be. In terms of at the school level, I mean, I think just the things that you see that we're doing, certainly, when, you know, I feel like the communication you've gotten recently is that there's been a, maybe crackdown is too strong a word, but there's certainly been an increased attention paid to-- been an increased attention paid to vaping, because vaping is an insidious thing in that you may not know what somebody's vaping. And so that's another way that we're able to decrease access. I, I've suggested for a long time, for parents, to the extent that you can, lock up your meds. I mean, honestly, lock up your meds, don't leave them around. I mean, if, if you've, if you've had a wisdom tooth pulled and you had an extra pill or something, destroy it the way you're supposed to, or at least lock it up so that other people can't access it. Make your alcohol inaccessible, just basically monitor that. That would be my messaging to, to parents. And I think of, I think of substance abuse issues for young people as a big community problem, right? As a very big community problem. And schools are a part of the community, we're not apart from the community. We've got to work together with families as much as possible on, on these kind of messages about, about not using. And about building up young people's adaptive coping strategies. Sincerely, if Falletti is right, and if he's right that it's hard enough to get, it's hard enough to get, it's hard to get enough of something that almost works, if he's right about that, then we have to figure out to young people, how do we get you to have skills that really work for you? So I think, I think there's a lot of conversations to be had in the sandwich, definitely.
Mr. Tredaway?
Could I inconvenience you to use that fancy clicker to back up to the places, the places that they were using?
Yes.
To that slide?
I'd love to oblige you.
Well...
Can somebody back it up, too? I don't know.
Actually, it's, oh wow. We're bringing the show down.
Thank you.
One of the things that I gleaned from that slide is that, while our primary responsibility is schools...
Yes.
And we understand how important it is to fit in in schools, but we see, what, one of the things that alarmed me from that slide is how much usage is at home by themselves?
Well, surveillance is low when you're home alone by yourself, right? In fact, there's...
But you're not trying to fit in, I mean, you're not trying to impress anyone there.
Right. Well, that's coping.
Yeah, right.
That speaks to the issue of coping.
Right.
Right, I'm glad that got your attention. That's, I mean, to me, that's a very heartbreaking, that slide in particular is quite heartbreaking, because it, it talks to isolation and loneliness for young people, disconnection, and we know that connection is the remedy, right? So we need them connected with healthy people, doing healthy things, and this isn't it. Yeah.
I have a question. Do we have education initiatives now in our schools, like where we have posters in our bathrooms, on the back of our bathroom doors, that talk about substance abuse?
Well, so, it's important to remember that in the health curriculum, you know, in sixth or ninth grade health curriculum, they cover that, they cover substance abuse, you know, rather thoroughly through the standard course of study. In terms of getting additional posters or things of that nature, I can't really speak to you how pervasive those are at this point. We can certainly, I can, I can look into that and get back to you with that, for sure.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, sure.
Ms. Sandeep?
One of the things I remember Dr. Reynolds saying was the likelihood that it would be good to start talking about prevention earlier, like in fourth and fifth grade. And I had never heard that before. I mean, we have DARE, say no to drugs, we've got all that, but I don't know necessarily what he could be suggesting to occur in fourth and fifth grade, and even if that's allowable, based on curriculum standards.
Yeah, so let me tell you, this is, and that, that's, that's a, it's a surprisingly controversial topic, right? Because a lot of parents might say, hold on, at fourth and fifth grade, you're introducing the idea of substances to my kids. They're, they're not even beginning to think about that. By talking about it, you've, you've created some curiosity in them. And then other people say, no, the, the more we can sort of make you aware of the risks, the better. So that's a very, that's one of those difficult things that, that boards such as this have to sort of resolve and kind of figure out a really good way forward. So lots of elementary schools in October do something called Red Ribbon Week, and they've done this for probably, oh, 30 or 40 years, in which they're, they have age-appropriate substance abuse prevention messages. That's certainly something that's not out of, not out of bounds for us to do. That's certainly something that a lot of school counseling programs do throughout, throughout the country. So that's certainly something we can do as well. I feel like DARE gets beat up on quite a bit, but my work with DARE here locally has been, we've got outstanding SROs that build meaningful relationships with young people and work hard at educating them so that, so that, I mean, I think that, so that they won't use substances. So I think that, I think we should continue to do those things, for sure.
Yeah, I grew up in the era of, this is your brain on drugs, and that scared the living daylights out of me. So, and I, I couldn't have been older than fourth or fifth grade. But I think that the message was clear from him, and that we should at least look into that. And I don't know if that's a possibility, or where we even start.
Well, so I think it starts now, right? And it starts with connection, because it always does. So we have outstanding school counselors, social workers, psychologists, health teachers in our schools that have this information. And so if we can have these sort of open dialogues with young people, have these conversations with parents, and partner with them, right? I mean, I think too often, sometimes, like, there's a way that you could listen to this entire presentation and walk away thinking somehow that we're blaming parents. No, that's not what we're doing. We're, we're partnering up. We're saying, the parents, clearly, this problem is bigger than you guys alone. Clearly, this problem is bigger than us alone. Let's, let's rally, let's go, right? So, I mean, I think, I think the more we can do that with the great people we have and the caring, concerned parents we have in our community, I think, I think that's how, that's the way, is connection.
So in the health, the North Carolina Essential Standards to Health Education, grades three to five, we do, we do address the alcohol, tobacco, and other drugs. We talk about strategies, risk, medication, so a lot of it is, so to John's point in the presentation, when they say early, you know, grades three to five in the Department of Public Education, and those essential standards clearly lay out a lot of what we're talking about today. So we are hitting it at an early age, because the conversation would be, is, are we talking before third grade? But I think right now, that the, the State Board of Education has laid those essential standards out, and I think we do a pretty good job of that. Doesn't mean we can't continue to have a discussion as to, how do we better inform our students and our parents, but I just want to say that that is part of our curriculum and part of the state's, the essential standards that we do use.
Thank you all for your time.
Yeah. So our next presentation is going to be by Mrs. Sarah Reeves. She's gonna update the board again on some curriculum resources that, there's a little bit of history to it, and I'll let Sarah explain it to you. But again, the effectiveness of the policies that the board has put into place has allowed us to make sure that we get our resources, especially our supplemental materials, placed into our curriculum in an appropriate way. And Sarah will give you a background on that as well. Mrs. Reeves?
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Kapicki, thank you for allowing me to present today. Some of this may be a little bit of a review for you, but I also think that it's very helpful. So there's a lot of complexities as it relates to how we adopt our state standards, what that looks like in terms of curriculum material selections, and so I just kind of wanted to kick us off today. So we have established a district curriculum and instruction committee that has actually been an existing professional learning community for multiple years, but we actually started it back up in March. And so, really, the intentionality in this committee is to help support with the work around the revisions with policy 3200. And so, as Dr. Kapicki alluded to, we have had policies such as 3100, 3200, and 3210 for many years. But I will say to you that in terms of the protocols and guidance, there wasn't necessarily the clarity in terms of a clear roadmap for all of our stakeholders. I'll give you a, for example, the principal had the ultimate authority to approve every single curriculum resource in a school. That is incredibly challenging and complex to have a principal lay their eyes on every single material, right? And so what we did this summer, and when we talked about revising 3200 and having a clear process for 3210, is that we were able to have a clear roadmap for what does that look like? What infrastructure do we need to establish as the eighth largest school system in this state, to be able to make sure that this happens well, and focus more on the processes and protocols? So this committee, we will be meeting throughout the course of the year. And as you can see, the intentionality in the committee is really to review any new curriculum, instructional programs, and/or state or federal regulations which impact local curriculum. So if we purchase anything that is to be used as a core curriculum or supplemental curriculum resource at a district level, the expectation is that those resources be vetted through this curriculum, and, through this committee, excuse me. And so we really want to make sure that we hold true to this, because the intentionality in the vetting is to help us have a lens that we might not have necessarily thought of before. Give us some feedback, give us a diverse perspective, so that we can consider whether or not this is appropriate for this grade level, or this is the best resource aligned to the standards. That's a, okay, perfect. So I know we've talked about this before, but I do think it's very important. So Dr. Kapicki alluded to this earlier. The State Board of Education determines which standards we will be, we will be teaching as a public school entity. And so they don't necessarily give us the actual resources to teach the standards. They do provide us the basic content, and they really give us the 30,000-foot view of standards, but it's not in a teachable format to be able to use and execute with students. And so this is just a sample of what you might see in terms of standards. So as you can see here, distinguished decisions by executive legislative and judicial leaders in terms of resolving conflict and establishing compromise, there's no reference here to what videos, text, text sets, textbook curriculum, assignments we would use for this specific standard. And in fact, it is up to the public school unit to determine what curriculum aligns best with these standards. And so that is the work that we do as a department. So really, what we try to do is make sure that we have a roadmap for instruction to be able to best support our teachers as they are making instructional decisions to meet the diverse needs of their students. And so we go through this process every year when we are doing curriculum revisions. And then, of course, when the state adopts a new standard, such as the standards revisions for science that are happening right now, we start from scratch. And so we go back to the drawing board and say, okay, the standard says this, what is going to be our pacing? When are we going to teach what? And then, of course, what curriculum materials are we going to use? What resources are we going to be able to provide teachers to be able to best support them to teach the standard to the best of their ability? And so what the curriculum is not is a play-by-play in terms of, let me give you a script and read off of it, or let me tell you exactly what you say verbatim per day. We really want to make sure that we are trusting our instructional specialists, and especially our instructional leaders at the building level, to be able to discern the unique needs of their students. And so this could like, look like scaffolding, so I might take a text set and use different lec style levels to build students' content knowledge or awareness, to be able to let them access the rigorous content. Or it may be selecting a video to be able to frame the lesson for students, so that they can make personal connections throughout the lesson. And so there really are three different buckets, so to speak, when you're talking about curriculum. So the first of which is what we talked about, which is the core curriculum. This would be something that we expect every teacher to teach, and it would be a curriculum resource that ideally, as a district level pending funding, we would be able to provide every single teacher in the district with access to. So this is our guaranteed experience, lesson, or resource that we would provide to all of our students in a specific content area and a specific grade level. For instance, would be kindergarten systematic phonics, every child is receiving letter land instruction. So that is a curriculum that we have adopted to support the science of reading standards as it relates to the kindergarten curriculum. Then you have what's called supplemental curriculum. So I'll go back and use my same analogy. Supplemental is really meant to enhance the learning experience for students. So this could be a teacher selecting a video to frame a letter land lesson. This could be a teacher utilizing another instructional material to coincide with that science of reading standard that they're trying to address in their classroom, because they noticed that students are grappling with the same lesson, and they've taught it for a week. And so that is really where the teacher level of expertise comes in, where it isn't necessarily a one-size-fits-all approach, because we know that not all of our learners need exactly the same thing. And then last but not least is really our intensive curriculum. So this is the curriculum that we would use to specifically address needs for students in a multi-tiered systems of support. So typically, you'll see students in a tier two or tier three interventions, where they may receive more intensive instruction in a pull-out or push-in model to address their unique academic needs. And again, going back to the same analogy with phonics, this could be a student being pulled out for a small group or push-in small group for a Hill Rap lesson, where another instructional specialist in the building is providing that same standard, but they're teaching it in a different way to meet the needs of the student. And so, as I shared before, previously in 3200, the way in which we vetted core curriculum resources, supplemental curriculum resources, and intensive, was kind of all looped into one. And so it was very difficult to establish clear processes. And now I feel very confident that we have a very good roadmap for being able to address the unique situations, to be able to ensure that 100% of the resources that we are using are vetted in the appropriate way, that align with policy. So the first thing that I want to speak to is specifically around the district purchased curriculum materials, because that is kind of where the district curriculum and instruction committee comes in, because that is the, that is the committee that we use to vet resources that we would purchase using district funds. And going back to the graphic before, this is where we are, we are really vetting core curriculum resources. So in this case, basically, the district or the state would identify a curriculum need. So we may say, we have science standards revisions coming up, we know that we need to identify a curriculum or resource need to address the revisions of the science standards, because our existing materials do not, do not serve that purpose. Or, we may say, we need to talk about a need for secondary or middle school ELA curriculum, because our data is yielding that the current core curriculum we are using is not producing the outcomes that we desire for our students. Both of which are very good examples of times where we would need to talk about a curriculum need. From there, our curriculum and instruction specialists will work in conjunction with a steering committee to explore research-based curriculums and resources. So they're using vetted, research-based curriculums or resources, and they're going through, and typically, this committee is comprised of administrators, teachers that are teaching in that content area, and typically, what we try to do with that teaching staff is we try to get beginning teachers all the way to veteran seasons teachers, because we want a diverse school of thought, but also in terms of where our teachers' skill sets are, we want to make sure that that diversity is represented in that team. From there, the CNI team would identify a funding source, because I think a myth is sometimes that a lot of curriculum and instruction you can build on on your own, but very candidly, it costs money, right? Textbook adoptions are very expensive. So any type of online resource, you would want to make sure that you secured a funding source to be able to follow through with whatever the need was for that department. And then from there, we would then propose that resource to the district CNI committee. The intentionality in that is certainly that we don't want to be able to present something that very candidly can't be funded, or that there isn't a need for. And then from there, the district and CNI committee, right now, we have this process in place, and I will say, we're certainly open to feedback, but we give it a month of vetting. So basically, we share the resources with the district curriculum and instruction committee, and then we have a Google form. And basically, what it says is, what is the resource that you're reviewing, and then what are some points that you wish us to consider? And so through that process, basically, our specialists then take the feedback from the district CNI committee and what they have vetted, and in respond on that form. So for example, we actually believe that this text set would be more appropriate in high school, given the following content. One of the things that I do think is really important to note is, so for example, the most recent resource that we have vetted has been middle school and high school book club books. The list is quite lengthy, it would be incredibly difficult to read every text and vet it in a month. We use high-quality professional resources, like Common Sense Media, to give us a very clear picture of what the content is around that. And then certainly, if any of the curriculum members would want to actually have access to the resource, we could certainly try to do that and work with our vendors to be able to get a sample before we purchased it. And then from there, basically, we come back to the district curriculum and instruction review committee, we share the feedback, and ultimately, we share whatever decision is made moving forward. So for example, if it's a book club book, it might not... We may decide, this content is actually, the Common Sense Media says that it is appropriate for eighth graders, but we have concerns in this area. Maybe we send out a parent permission form home before that student selects that resource. So that might be something where we're coming to a compromise, but we're taking feedback from the stakeholders to make sure that we have a clear communication plan, and we're equipping our teachers with the best recommendations based on whatever resource we purchase. For the school-level process, it looks a little bit different. So, I think it's important to consider going back to what we're talking about in terms of supplemental. These are resources that are designed to enhance a lesson. So for example, teachers make these teacher moves every day, right? They're selecting hook videos to grasp their students in. They may have a current event article that directly relates to the content area that they are teaching that's going to be able to better engage students in the material and access. And so, what we, we have established for this according to 3200 is we actually work in tandem to make sure that schools are equipped with a process where they actually use an existing framework, which is their professional learning community. So all of our teachers meet in professional learning communities with either content area or grade level area to be able to review resources and lesson plans for upcoming weeks. So the way that resources are vetted in this process is actually to be vetted through their colleagues and administrative presence. So, we may say that we're coming up on a unit, and we would really like to use this local resource that's from the Independent Tribune because it has a direct connection to what is happening in this community, and we would love to be able to use it. So, the teachers would then share out the resource. They would be vetting it through their professional learning community so that all their colleagues will take into consideration, hey, have you seen this? Or would you consider this? And then, basically, that resource would be used, and teachers would post that resource to their Canvas page so that they could make sure that their families are aware of the resources that they are using. So again, that would not be for typically core instructional resources because those are provided at the district level. This would be the supplemental things meant to enhance a classroom's experience. So, I shared a lot of information, but I did want to be very clear about the different vetting processes we have. And I will say, I just want to thank the board for their leadership in helping us to develop clear pathways and processes. I think that that is tremendously important when you're talking about curriculum review. And very candidly, when 3200 had all of that lumped into one, it was incredibly difficult to discern. How do we make sure we have good processes when we're talking about five different things? Now, I feel like we have a really good roadmap. I will say, the resources that we have for challenged materials, as well as our secondary resource selection rubric, we have now been asked to share that across the state. So, I'm super proud of our team for the work that they have done. And so, I'll open the floor to any questions that you may have around these processes or anything else.
So, Sarah, thank you for the presentation. That's very, that gives us a lot of detail and a lot of exposure across the district as to how we do these things. One of the things I want to point out to the board was, the rea, one of the reasons too, we're going through this process at different levels is recently, over the last school year, Sarah, through her work and her team's work, discovered some of the, so, if you go back a year, we changed the policy to vet certain things and how we did it, Sarah discovered a set of books, chapter books that, she can speak to the amount of books, I don't recall the number, but, that were purchased in 2019 that were never appropriately vetted through any systemic or policy process. So she found those and brought them to my attention. We discussed them, and I said, well, just let's put it through the process the appropriate way, but it's vetted through the appropriate policy as, as it's supposed to be vetted to what the board created in the new policy. So, that was done. Those books are not direct instructional materials. They are basically, and if I'm saying this wrong, Sarah, correct me, they're, they're chapter books that, that exist in book, in, in school, classroom libraries, if you will. They're not directly related to direct instruction, or they're not directly assigned as you have to read this, or they're classroom libraries. But this process that was put into place, you know, when we were alerted to this situation, the process really helped us go through and vet the books appropriately through this, the, the, the appropriate, whether it be supplemental, instructional, or, or core instruction, core curriculum, if you will. So all of those books have been vetted through the appropriate process, and now, there's, I'm going to say scattered, I don't mean that in a frivolous way, but that they're, they're in the district through the approved vetted process that the board asked us to do last year, so they have gone through the appropriate policy process, and they are, they have been vetted, and they now sit through the process according to policy. So I, I think Sarah and her group have done a great job, and continue to do a good job. And if you have any questions, please ask her.
Board members, any questions? Ms. Escobar?
Thank you for the update, and thank you, Dr. Kupicki, for explaining that. In that process, were there any books that were eliminated?
So, we're, we're not finished with the process yet, so we will be sharing the vetted feedback when we meet on Monday. So I will tell you, out of, out of the vetting process, there were seven specific items that I want to discuss next Monday. So for instance, there are several recommendations of, would you consider this book in high school? Or, I think it's really important that we talk to parents before their child reads this selected book. So we've got to talk about what that process looks like on Monday, moving forward as we, you know, finalize our plan for next year.
Any other questions? Ms. Lindsay?
I just want to say thank you. Thank you for, for doing this, putting this together, working this process. I know it's still a work in progress, but thank you for putting in the time to do this.
One of the things I think is important to say is that we are 100% committed to transparency to our families. They deserve to know what their children are learning in class. They deserve to know what their children are reading in class. And so, we are not perfect, I will say that, but we are working really hard, and I believe the current infrastructure and processes we have in place will get us to a place of being more transparent and clear with our families.
Any other questions?
Sarah, before you walk away, could you, I'm going to put you on the spot here. I wanted to brag a little bit. Dr. Bowers, John McGrath, and Sarah have been asked to present at the University of North Carolina Charlotte at a State Board of Education meeting on this Wednesday. Could you kind of talk a little bit about that?
Yeah, absolutely. Dr. Roth, if you want to speak to it as well. So, one of the things that we have been asked to share is-
Dr. Roth, I forgot you, I apologize. But Dr. Roth is also involved in this. A lot of names, a lot of names in the head this evening, but thank you.
I don't, I don't feel comfortable sharing just alone. I would love for all of them to come up as well.
Yeah.
So we were approached, basically, on the, the processes in multi-tiered systems of support that we provide students specifically as it relates to discipline and social emotional learning, which we are incredibly proud of, and I think it's an amazing opportunity to spotlight the work that has been happening this last year.
So they asked us to speak about our positive behavior supports that we have in place through MTSS. And so, we're going to talk about how we do that, as well as the implementation of our SEL Core Curriculum, which is the Positivity Project, and how do we monitor that? How are we meeting the needs of all our kids' social emotional learning piece? And then-
Yeah, and in addition to that, we're also going to be talking about the, the cultural enhancement and book study we're doing with our, our school leaders, and how they are trans, are using that information to build closer relationships with their, not only their coworkers, but with students that will result in de-escalation of some behaviors and it not getting to a point where it becomes an issue and, and seeing less frequency of those behaviors. So kind of a proactive and, and more of a proactive than a reactive approach.
And the other piece we're going to be talking about is the teaming structures, the committees, and things that we have created here at the district level so that we have cross-department collaboration. So, Student Services working with Curriculum Instruction, working with Administrative Services, and John's going to talk about our Discipline Committee and how we have addressed disproportionality for our EC students. So we are off the warning list that we were on a year ago, so we are very proud that we are not on that list anymore. And a lot of the things that we have put in place are because of the work that we've done collaboratively. And Sarah's going to talk about our play-based kindergarten pilot.
Yeah, and, and also emphasizing the interdepartmental communication that we have, everyone being on the same page and talking about what our goals are and how we continue to understand what each of our roles are in, in, in addressing student behavior, and again, being proactive with, with it occurring.
So I appreciate you sharing that with our board and our public. This is an honor, and it's a credit to the work that they're doing. But more importantly, you know, Dr. Roth, Sarah Reeves, and John McGrath are up here presenting it, but Gordon Palmer, Dr. Parker, and Anna Blessington had a big part in this. And then, it just, it trickles down to where, where it matters most, which is our teachers. So I really want to commend our teachers and thank them for the work they do. The results that are, that are being revealed is really a direct result of the work our teachers do in the classroom on a daily basis with our kids. So I deeply appreciate that, and our administration's leadership, our principals and all involved. But I really want to shout out to our, our teachers and say thank you for your dedication, commitment, and always thinking, putting our kids' needs first, and the results are showing that. And I really applaud them for that, and I thank all the people that are, we get to present this, but the reality of it is, is the work of the teachers on a day-to-day basis that really shares the results with all of us. So I thank them for that, and I thank you for, I know I put you in the hot seat, but I, it's important to share some of the good stuff that we're doing, and, and the leaders that you see in front of you really, really work very hard to make sure that we're continually improving. So I thank them for that, and I thank the board. That is all I have this evening, unless you have any other questions for Mrs. Reeves.
Ms. Sandage?
I was just wanting to say thank you for the presentation. Thank you for all of your work. But I think it speaks volumes to our willingness to work with our community when you talk about, we are not perfect. Sometimes we forget, we're the eighth-largest district in this entire state. So it's going to be difficult to always get it right, but acknowledging that we are wanting to be transparent, and then being open to suggestions and feedback. So I just wanted to say I appreciate you acknowledging that because it speaks to who we are as a district. So I, I thank you for that.
And I would also say the same as Ms. Sandage, that we really appreciate you guys and what you do and the hard work and the challenges that you face on a daily basis. There is just a lot that comes at us, and it changes constantly, but we really appreciate your efforts.
Thank you for your support.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, board members, we'll go to 4.03, our attorney comments, and have Mr. Jay White to the podium.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Board members. I wanted to let you know that there are some important, some important matters that are coming up. One of the things that y'all may be very well aware of, that the public may not be, is considered crossover. Crossover is a reference, is a date in the legislative biennium when a bill must have passed from one chamber to the other in order to still have an opportunity to be passed into a law. Knowing the crossover deadline for each chamber gives an early indication of the bills, of a bill's viability. If a bill is not passed through the originating chamber by that date, that particular bill in instance, in most instances, is dead. A bill that does not cross over before the deadline commonly faces high procedural hurdles in order to be considered in the opposite chamber. That is the reason why this week is going to be very important in North Carolina. The crossover date for the biennium is May the 4th. So that's something very important. And please be aware that the bill is nothing but a transport language. When a bill, although a bill may be dead for a biennium due, due to crossover, the contents of the bill can be pulled out of that bill and put into another bill. So, keep your, you got to keep your eyes open. There are certain exceptions. I'll be glad to go over those with you, but I think your eyes would glaze over and you 'd get very bored quickly. I did. The next thing you need to know, one of the things you've been tracking is House Bill 219. That was heard last week in committee on April the 25th. It is still in committee. I checked a little while ago. It's still in committee. The next time that committee meets is tomorrow at May the 2nd. I tried to find their agenda for tomorrow, and I could not find their agenda. So I'm not saying that I, that I'm perfect in trying to locate it, but I was not able to find it to see if it was on discussion tomorrow. But that meeting is at 1:00, and you can certainly stream it if that's what you want to do. But I can update you next week as to where it stands. I will tell, tell you is that House Bill 314 is another bill. That is a bill for conflict of interest training for LEAs, requires all employees of local school districts who are involved in making or administering contracts to receive a minimum of two hours of conflict of interest training within 90 days of assuming the responsibility of making or administering contracts and the continuous training in every odd year thereafter. So that's something to keep an eye out. That crossover took place on April the 21st, so that is highly likely to be passed into a bill. And to put a smile on your face, you have to really enjoy Senate Bill 582, and also the corresponding House Bill 67. That crossover on House Bill 67 was on March the 16th. Get your pen and paper out, this is very important. Local boards of education must strive to ensure that 100% muscadine grape juice is made available to all students as part of the nutrition program or through vending facilities. The provision in Senate Bill 582, which is similar, primary difference is that House Bill 67 requires the supplier to buy back unopened and unexpired products, and Senate Bill 582 does not. So wanted to leave then, leave the night on a little bit of a smile for y'all. So muscadine grapes, here they come. Anything else?
Ms. Sandage?
And this may be something that you just come back, or you send an email in relation to, there are several bills that I had questions about that are scheduled for tomorrow.
Yes.
219 was one of them. 618 was another, House Bill 618. House Bill 793. House Bill 823. And House, House Bill 773. And my interest is, what does this, what do they mean for us?
Yes, ma'am.
Like in layman's terms?
I got 793, I didn't catch the next one, I'm sorry.
823 and 773.
There's another bill that I'm, that I've started looking at is House Bill 574 and Senate Bill 631. That was a crossover on April the 20th. That is Fairness in Women's Sports Act. That is something that we need to keep a track on, and I'm going to, I was going to report on that next Tuesday night. I don't think there's, there's any urgency to know right now, but I will certainly touch base with you on that one. But I will, let me look at these. I got one, two, three, four bills that you've asked me to, to take a gander at, and I'll get to you. Okay? Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Lindsay?
So, Keisha, I could, because I cannot remember what the House Bill number is for this one, but if this is the same one, is it the one with the choice to pick whichever school you want to in the county that you're in? Okay. Yeah, I'm interested in that one, too.
Yes, ma'am. I'll look at that.
So Jay, we've got House Bill 793.
Yes, sir.
I'm going to say them again if I can. House Bill 618, House Bill 793, House Bill 823, House Bill 773, and House Bill 574 are the ones, I want to know what that means for us as a district. Like if this were implemented-
574, as I just mentioned that to you, so-
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I'm going to talk about that next week. Stay tuned. Same bat time, same bat channel.
Thank you.
Anything else?
No.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, board members, we'll go to our presentations with 5.01. We'll have Cooperative Strategies come and speak to us about our boundary realignment process overview. Welcome.
Thank you very much. Nice to be with you again. And thank you for the information about a bill that certainly is very relevant to boundaries and how we talk about that. So I think as we get further on the road, we'll, we'll come back to that. I'm Justin Rich with Cooperative Strategies. Just as a reminder, tonight, what I would like to do is revisit boundary criteria, which we talked a little bit about last time, and also just to provide an update on the process so far. So I'll get going on that. So, I want to come back to a question that is probably seems very fundamental, but this is something that, that comes up, whether it's community members, parents may ask, why are boundaries even necessary? When, you know, when we build a new school, why do we even need to have boundaries? And I think this is, again, fundamental to this process, and would like to just discuss why they are important and why this is, why school districts choose to have attendance boundaries, you know, really universally unless you're a single-school school district and, and small rural parts. But the important part of that really has to do with managing, managing enrollment, making sure that you can eliminate overcrowding, you can plan for future growth when necessary, try to keep distances traveled by students as low as possible. Really importantly, student safety- Really importantly, student safety, so that you don't have some schools that are so large that it's not safe for students to be there, providing adequate services. And finally, just making sure that there's fairness in the process for determining where you would go to school as a student. So with that as a background, some of the things that, and again, this is bringing back a concept from last time, that we have used in boundary processes are criteria. Your board policy actually has some criteria that are laid out. I wouldn't call it prescriptive, but it has some things that are very much in line with this. So what are the criteria that we would use to determine whether or not an attendance boundary scenario makes sense, or if there's better options? I've put these really into two different categories. The first one being those that can be looked at quantitatively, so we have data that can directly measure that. Things like balanced utilization, or enrollment and capacity, and that percentage, making sure you're not overcapacity at a given school, enrollment trends and projected growth, and looking at that growth over time and making sure there's still adequate capacity even after that. Looking at things like feeder patterns, and that is how students move from different school levels, from elementary to middle to high, and keeping a group of them together so that there's not a small group of kids that are, feel like they're on their own. They're not with the people that they're accustomed to being with. So those are things that we can measure, and we have information for that. We can consider things like the socioeconomic composition of, of a student, of a student population. Most often, what we'll do is we'll look at the district average and see whether or not an attendance boundary scenario at those affected schools improves that, gets closer to that district-wide average. So those, those are things, again, that can be measured. Things like transportation impacts, looking at average travel times, or the efficiency of bus routes. And then also going back and looking at prior boundary decisions that were made, where there are students that were, at that time, reassigned to a different school. There's also on the qualitative side, these, these are the things that are a little bit harder to measure, but maybe when you see it, you know whether or not it's meeting that criteria. Things like the facilities master plan update, and making sure that a boundary scenario doesn't conflict with that in some way. Things like neighborhood continuity. What we've found is that it sounds great, and people probably have a good idea of what they believe their neighborhood or their community is. It's a little harder to, to define and can be subjective at times. Things like having contiguous area, where all of the geographic areas are connected, they're not disconnected, in terms of maybe an island or something like that. That's, that's one way to look at these. And then geographic features, prominent natural features, or man-made roads, highways, rivers, mountains, things like that. So now that we've talked a little bit about those criteria, I just want to take a quick step back and talk about what leads to a decision like this to undertake a boundary realignment study, and just to provide some context, because I think this is a unique situation where school districts don't often encounter the same amount of growth in a relatively short period of time, and that has certain, certain things come along with that. What we have on here is a enrollment density map. This is based on your student enrollment data. And looking back 10 years versus the current year, it may be hard to, to make out some of the subtleties here, but what we see is more concentrated, not, not surprising, more concentrated student enrollment in particular areas. I'm looking at areas like Cox Mill and parts of Concord, and even down into Harrisburg, you'll, you'll start to see how those populations are really concentrated. What I want to think about is if we were to go back 10 years and do a boundary process then, without that knowledge of how things are going to change over time, that's a challenging thing to do. And so we can forecast out, and we can think about, gather all the relevant data, but ultimately, when you build, and I'll show on the next slide here, when your enrollment more than doubles, and the number of school facilities that you have more than doubles, each time you're, you're reevaluating this. And so I guess the, the point of bringing this information up is just simply that that is a challenging prospect to be able to deal with all that. And that's our task, is to try to look forward and think about how this is going to affect students down the road. I want to come back to what I briefly touched on last time, and that is, how, what is the framework for this bound, for these boundary criteria? How do we use this? You know, how, how do we think about this as we go through the process? And first and foremost, we take a data-driven approach. The reason why is because I think that you all are really clued into some of those other factors that we talked about, and what we can do, and what our expertise is in, in demographics, is to give you the data about how this may play out down the road, and look at your existing circumstances. So we take that data-driven approach. What we're trying to do is to filter out some of the subjective things, and really provide you with the things that can be quantified, and you can really look at how that impacts your community here. And so that data, data-driven approach really is important, too. When we go back and we start the process of developing boundary options, and thinking, "Well, what if we did this," or what, you know, "Did this in another scenario," these boundary criteria can help guide that. And I think that's important input that you all can give us. Some of these things may be, we, as I talked about before, and what, what's really important is that some of these criteria aren't really compatible with each other, and so we may have to make some difficult decisions about what would be prioritized. And so this is continuing that conversation, just so, again, we can get clear direction from you all, and use that during this process to come up with scenarios that make sense. Last point here, and this is, I think, really referencing the prior slide about, when we can, we want to try and measure certain characteristics of a boundary scenario, but again, that's not always possible. So I wanted to, outside of boundaries, I want to shift gears and talk a little bit about where we're at at the process now. We still are in the, in the beginning stages, and this is a multi-phase process that we're going through. The first part is doing an update to the district's master plan. So at this point, we've received a lot of data, and we're going through that now. We're analyzing that, and also working with staff and administrators to make sure that we're verifying things that we may have questions about, and asking certain questions just about what's been done in the past, and how we can sort of chart the, chart the future going forward. There are some great things that I think are coming out of that. We will probably be sharing that with you towards the end of summer, just based on our timeline. But as that information comes available, and as we do these updates, we'll, we'll be sure to, to provide that to you. Also with the enrollment projections, those are currently underway. Again, we have a lot of data, data that we're analyzing and going through that process. We have, there's so much information related to future developments, and just trying to get a handle on how this is going to play out over time, both with the enrollment projections and then the student potential analysis, which is the housing study. And just a reminder of where we're at in the process here, after tonight's meeting, what we would like to do is to narrow down those priorities that we talked about tonight, so in July, we can have a better sense of where your priorities really lie. Again, to make sure that we can use that as a foundation for when we develop boundary scenarios, and then also when we're working with the internal redistricting committee and the focus group, to have clear direction from the board in how we do that. Of course, things will change over time, but some good input from you all right now will go a long way for us to, to have a better product. And then next time around, we'll have more information on enrollment projections and the student potential analysis. And that's all I have for tonight. I'm sure, I would like, again, to answer any questions more specifically about those boundary criteria, not to put you all on the spot, otherwise we can wait till next time to, to jump into that again.
Any discussion, Mr. Tredaway?
Mr. Rich, thanks for being here. Could you, from your experience, tell us what has been a successful way to select the focus group participants?
Yeah, and, and that can take many different forms. I think what has worked well is to work with, work with staff and, and the administration to, considering that this is a small, is a smaller group of about 20 people or so, to make sure that there is good representation from a diverse group of stakeholders. That's certainly challenging. I want to, you know, the, the purpose of this is to get really focused as objective as possible, so people who are really rooted in the district as a whole and not just their community, they can kind of have both those lenses of how this affects me and my neighborhood, but also how this affects the district as a whole. So that's the kind of person that we would want on, on the focus group, recognizing that there's other opportunities for people to go to community forums, to interact in other ways. So just, just the nature of this, I think we need to have it focused so that we can coordinate people's schedules and have those multiple meetings with them in a way that's manageable.
Thank you. One, one other, not really a question, but a comment is that, I'm trying to find it here. Oh, the cleaner feeder patterns, I just want to also, it's obvious that the first priority there is the kids. But, but also, the cleaner, our patterns are, the cleaner registration is, there's just a lot of other things that are logistical that it will improve if we can clean up those feeder patterns. It's not just the kids knowing who's in their next classroom, but there's a lot of logistical things involved with that as well.
No doubt, yeah. I, I think I am not the curriculum expert here, but what I have heard is that when there's more predictability about that, that's better for education. Teachers at the lower levels understand what's expected at the next level, the more continuity that surrounds that, articulation of programs and things like that, so.
Any other questions?
I just. I agree with Sam. One of the many initiatives that we've done over the years, we pretty much did that. But, but it went away. So we need to try, try to figure out how we can be consistent and, and keep it there a long time. Because it worked, it worked good for like three years.
Yeah.
The feeder patterns, but then it changed. Whatever we can do to, to make it where it's longer lasting.
Certainly. Yeah, I, I think that was part of the reason of sharing that graphic, just about how enrollments changed over time, and then that bar graph was shaded into the different colors. If, if you have really clean feeder patterns, and all of a sudden add in another elementary school, that kind of throws everything out, right? And making that balance of, well, we have capacity, and could we send a larger group of students at the elementary school to the middle school level, and so on and so forth, it does become a tricky balancing act, but certainly we'll be very focused on that. We commonly hear that that's a really high priority, and it's good to hear that. That's, again, just framing the criteria.
Ms. Sandage.
So is the idea for this board to identify criteria to you today, and then that will be taken back to your group, discussed, see how that adds to what you're working on, and then at some point, get feedback from the community in relation to that criteria? Do I understand that correctly?
Yeah, so I, the, the way I would describe this, I think, is today, you're hearing this again. Last time I was here, there was a lot of other stuff going on, and I think I just want to take some time to really focus in on that, and, and just do a deeper dive on, on what boundary criteria are used for, why they're important, what the challenges may be that come from that. And coming back in July, would really be nice to have a few of those criteria that you, as a board member, say, "This is really important to me." Again, some may be more obvious than others, but that's helpful for, for our direction as we start to go and build those scenarios. Now, when we do community meetings, when we do the focus groups, we will have a discussion about boundary criteria. And I want to emphasize that each one of the scenarios that we present to you will have information that's, that's, that's responsive to one of those criteria. Again, some aren't easily measured, but for the most part, when we can, we will call that out and show you. For instance, what happens, you know, at a given boundary when we make this shift, what happens to, to the available capacity, or to the, to the utilization rate, things like that. So that'll be involved in the entire process. I don't think that there's, that you will need to go out and ask the community what, what they think about those different criteria. They're going to tell us, and they're going to tell us through, you know, the, the website. They're, they're going to tell you throughout the process, and it will also come during those community meetings, about how they prioritize certain things.
If I said something about asking the community, that wasn't what I meant, because I already know they're going to say something based off of what they.
Yeah.
Well, I guess a concern of mine would be, as one individual board member, is there are several communities that have been uprooted several times, and I would hate to see those communities go through that again. So if that, that's a possibility to be considered for criteria, and I mean, especially based on, I'm trying to say this in best way possible. There are disenfranchised communities that have been uprooted on several occasions, not by this board per se, but, you know, in the past, and I would just really like to see that considered and looked at. So that would be me as one individual board member.
I think that's really important. I think the nature of where growth happens thus necessitates building schools in those areas, and then you are going to have those larger impacts. It's part of the process, but to the extent we can think about those moves and how it affects, I mean, for instance, if there's some middle school students that were previously elementary students that were reassigned, like those are things that we would want to know. As long as we have that data and working with staff on, on trying to identify those areas or those specific students, I think certainly that is relevant to this process.
I do have one more question, and this may not be right. Have you ever experienced with the community that you worked with where there was open enrollment? And what did that look like? I mean, because we, we got, well, we've been passing stuff real quick here lately, so I'm just trying to see what does, what would that entail for us? We're going through this redistricting process, and they could very well say open enrollment tomorrow. I mean, I'm saying that, but what would that look like, if that happens?
I would, I would be interested to see if there's any caveats, limitations to the legislation. If it's truly open enrollment, then there are no boundaries, just fundamentally. And that is, we have, just to back up for a second and, and respond to your question, we have worked with a lot of districts that have some level of open enrollment and more free choice to be able to go different places. And I think it takes more data to be able to understand, if we make this move, what then happens? Is there still enough capacity at a site? You know, does this really have much of an impact on a community or a neighborhood where most of those kids are going other places anyway? So I think it just depends. We have been able to do that, and again, I think it's just, in the analysis, we have to figure out ways to predict what are the outcomes of that.
I'm going for one more. I'm sorry. So what are your professional thoughts on open enrollment, just based off of your experience? And if you don't want to share, I would understand that.
Yeah, I don't, I don't want to step into, I, I will say that in, in certain communities, they're able to use that very well. I think that my understanding of this school system and the magnet programs and some other choices, certainly that can be used as an effective tool up to a point. That's what I'll say about that.
Thank you.
You bet.
Mr. Walter.
Thank you, thank you for coming and presenting to us again. The community is interested. I mean, we're, they're paying attention, and we're already getting questions, so. And these 10, you're looking for us to rank them as, or importance for you, because they're all important. I mean, they're all important to somebody, otherwise they wouldn't have been there in the first place. And as Keesha was saying, her, her concern, you know, I share that, too, but if you now stop ever, stop yourself from moving anyone twice, you've pretty much, that's what you're here for, because half, half the folks have been moved, or are obviously moved because of capacity issues in the first place. So you're doing a hamstring what you've been asked to do necessarily by saying, you know, "We're stuck, stuck to that particular criteria." So I'm trying to see, what do you, what do you need from, just a ranking of these things? Or, I mean... things, or, I mean?
I think, I think that comment right there is important, and that is one of the baseline things that you will deal with as we present boundary scenarios to you or recommendations that come from the focus groups. You'll have to wrestle with that. So, what I would like from you is, again, there, there may be some that are just, simply there has to be space for students, so capacity or utilization, that has to be the primary consideration. But if there are other things that you either are hearing from the community already, or you can recollect from past processes that we haven't considered here, so are there any that are missing? And of these that are on here, what really rise to the top based on what you've seen in the past?
I mean, if you try to sell it to the community, you want it to make sense, and that's why, that's why those geographical features are there. Again, there's a reason behind each one of those things you can come up with.
Rob, if I can ask you to pause it for a minute, this is a great question you asked. You introduced a really good topic. So, and Justin, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, I think the intent here is that these are considerations that you may or may not have to engage in depending on what comes back based on some of our focus group meetings, internal committee meetings, what have you. But I do want to caution the board, it is impossible to have 10 criteria come through on every one of them. You need to focus on three or four, and you're going to have some really difficult decisions to make, and I understand that. Your point is right on the mark, Rob. So, I don't want to mislead the board and say, "Yeah, all tendencies count." They're all important, but it's, it's, for lack of a better way of saying it, you know, you can't please everybody's wishes and wants. There are things we're going to have to make across the board in terms of what is the actual criteria we're going to follow. So, I think what Justin's trying to say is, these are some of the considerations that you're going to have to consider and look at as we move forward. And unfortunately, they all can't be, you know, the criteria, because you're not going to.
It goes back to the, why are we doing this?
Well, I think we're doing it, yeah, yeah, exactly right. I think capacity is one of the, when I look at this, for me, I would say we're up to top. Enrollment capacity is probably one of the number one things we need to consider as to what we're doing. And then I think it's the board's input based on some of the information we get back from the committee, focus groups, internal redistricting committee, and then the board's own input, and then Justin and cooperative strategies expertise as to what those are, that maybe three or four are. So, I just want to clarify, if I've misspoken, Justin, or if I've said anything that is not accurate, please clarify.
No, I think that's right. I think, I would only add that, in the effort of being fully transparent with you all, this is where we're going to start, and these are the things that we're going to look at, and we understand that there's going to be some tough choices that are going to have to be made, but this is where our focus will be.
I mean, it makes, it makes sense that you need to evaluate these things, because the community cares about them too. So, for the focus group, are you going to have an application process, or you just asking us, us to do that for you, or what?
Yeah, we're, we're going to work with staff in the, in the district leadership team in order to get those folks, and we haven't developed exactly how that's going to roll out, but we'll know soon.
By when? What can the public expect to see that?
I, I imagine that'll happen before July, and then we'll, we'll start meeting in, in the fall with the focus group and the internal redistricting committee.
Okay. And then my last one had to do with the facility master plan. Talk to me about how, how that's going to be used, or what are you, what are you doing with the facility master plan?
Yeah, what, what we heard, not only from the RFP, but from some of the comments that, that you all had during that process where, where we were brought on board, is just some clarification about future plans and how that might impact boundaries and not doing those in a vacuum.
Like the 10-year plan that we submitted to the county, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, so, so this will be updating that, taking a look at your, your facility condition, the age of your facility, so, trying to come up with some metrics that lay out things. And this is part of the capital plan that, that continues to, to be updated, but I think that this is a supplement to it with more of a strategic look, again, really being data-driven.
But it's all future, it's all out there, future funded, maybe not funded, but the actual redistricting thing has to happen.
Yeah.
Pretty soon when we open these new schools.
Certainly.
Okay. Thank you.
You bet.
Ms. Lancy.
I'm just going to offer you a little bit of friendly advice. I know you want community buy-in. If you call it Concord instead of Concord, oh, you ain't going to get it.
Noted.
Ms. Escobar.
That's my California.
It's okay. I said, as long as you deliver the numbers, I think we'll be okay. So, I just want to say thank you for presenting this and explaining this. I think having this chart is very helpful, and I would encourage the public to look at it so that they have a good understanding, because yes, some things you can look at with numbers and some things you can't. I will just say that, I'm sure the board's hearing it, I'm hearing it too. I had a seventh grader ask me this weekend, "Where am I going to go to high school?" And I said, "We don't know yet." And, and so, when you talk about the predictability, those feeder patterns, that, if you've already been displaced, like we talked about, there's a lot of doubt out there, and so, we want to make sure our community has as much information. Whenever we have it, obviously, we can't give them, I can't answer that question right now, but we want to be able to. So, I would just say that, as far as criteria for me, and I know that we'll talk about this as a board, but safety is very important to me. And so, when I say safety, I think about, obviously, that utilization for the building, obviously, capacity is a concern, but that also comes down to transportation. And transportation, it's one thing to be on a bus when you're in middle school, it's another thing when you're in high school and you're driving. And so, my daughter's, I can't, she's going to be able to drive next year, and it really matters to me how far that school is. So, it's one thing for us to entrust an adult bus driver to drive somebody, but it's another thing for, for high schoolers. So, I just think that when we're looking at this, so that's quantitative, but it's also qualitative too. So, those are my top three, and I also recognize that, just as a board, it's very important for us to, to pick those three or four. As a member of the public, in, in the past, this is my first year on the board, we, we looked at that policy, we looked at that criteria, and we were trying to understand what it was. And at the end of the day, it looked like capacity was the overwhelming decision, which I can understand logically, but if I'm sitting here trying to make an argument to you based on what you've said is important, but then you can't deliver on that, that can be very frustrating. So, again, I just, I think it would be wonderful for us to have a clear process on what's happening with the focus groups. If people, we need to make that clear. People are already asking me to be on this stuff. So, I just, whatever it is, whatever the criteria is, whatever we're doing, we need to make that abundantly clear along the process. But, again, like what I said to that seventh grader was like, "We'll know more in the fall," but that's, that's hard to wait when you're like, "Well, where am I going to be in two years?" So, we just, we're hearing it, thank you for being here, but I think we just, as a board, have to have these tough conversations so that our, our public is well aware of what's going on.
Okay, any other questions? All right, thank you very much.
I'm sorry.
Justin, I think there was one more question, I apologize.
I'm from California too, that's why he's over here getting on me, but I don't say Concord, I'd never say Concord. The other important thing for me, this would like, like be one and a half, if it, on important scale, would be to make sure we vet the process for finding the focus group folks. If I heard anything from the last redistricting we, we did, was that people were not included in areas that were going to be most affected by the decisions. I don't know how you map that out doing a full-scale redistricting, but just pay attention to how you identify the folks that are going to be on this focus group, because people will look at that specific detail very, 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 very strictly.
Yeah, that, that makes sense to me, to make sure that the people that are going to be most affected have a voice in it.
Okay, thank you. We wanted to ask if Mr. Fur, Phil Fur, would come up and just tell our public about the Engage website that's going to be available, and the information that's going to be there, so if they have questions, they can start using that.
Yes, so tomorrow morning, we'll activate the District Long Range Realignment Study page on EngageWithCCS.com. So, that's our new platform that allows for community engagement. And on that site tomorrow, there'll be a brief description of the study. There is a calendar that lists all the dates that Mr. Rich has shared with you in PowerPoint form. They're listed in calendar form on there, the board updates, the internal groups, the external groups. There are important links there, which are links to the board meeting live stream so far and to date. And then there are documents there, which are these presentations that Mr. Rich has presented at the board meeting. There is an FAQ. There are no FAQs there yet, because we don't have any questions. As soon as we identify those frequently asked questions, we will move them to the FAQ. There is a spot for community members, general public, to ask questions on that site, and then we will respond with answers to those questions in a timely manner. So, that'll be, when you get to the site, you'll see it lists the people who are listening, and those people will be working together to respond to those questions. And that'll be active tomorrow. That's the way we'll do it, it is open for questions. Now, you do have to register for an account, because we want to be able to see how, what your association is with Cabarrus County. Are you a parent, a student, grandparent, are you a community member, that type thing. So, you can subscribe with your screen name, it's anonymous, your questions, your comments are kept anonymous by your screen name, but on the backside, we'll know what zip code you live in and what your affiliation is with Cabarrus County Schools.
Okay, thank you very much, appreciate that.
I have a question.
Yes?
I was wanting to see if, at all possible, and this may be too much to ask for, can we show people what we're talking about with the website? You just said a whole mouthful. And, I mean, not today, but at some point, can we make sure we show people how they can access this information? I just think it's, it goes to our transparency.
We can do that at the regular Board Business Meeting, it'll take a few minutes. I can put that under my comments, and Phil could show us how we do the Engage website. That's an easy one.
Yeah, for, as far as tomorrow goes, so we'll share it on Facebook and Twitter, and Instagram doesn't allow hyperlinks, but we will put something on Instagram directing people back to the page. So, you'll be able to hyperlink straight off Facebook, and I know everybody doesn't use social media. There will also be a connect dead email, not tomorrow, we have other things going out tomorrow, but one day this week, there'll be a connect dead email with the hyperlink and the instructions on registering for an account, because that'll be the difficult part. You can just comment on social media, but here, you're going to have to register for an account to participate in the, in the commenting part. Anybody can see it, but in order to participate, you'll have to register for an account.
So, Phil, the, we're, we're making this live tomorrow.
Yes.
So, what we can do then is just kind of walk people in the process, how to reg, not a long, it won't, it's not a long detailed thing, you and I have gone through it. So, we can just show the public next week how to, what it looks like, how to access it, how to register it, and then I think we're being a little more transparent about what it is we're talking about.
Yeah, we should have some examples for what those questions will look like by next week as well, so.
I'll even take a tutorial somewhere, a link to a tutorial. Whatever works best.
Okay.
Thank you, I appreciate you coming up. Okay, we're going to move board members to items for consent or action for the May 8th, 2023 business meeting. We'll start with 6.01, class size waivers, and we'll have Dr. Bish and Joanna Parker. Welcome.
Thank you. Dr. Kapicki, Madam Chair, members of the board. Dr. Parker and I are, and I am going to say it is Dr. Parker now. So, we have two Dr. Parkers in the building now, so.
Squared.
Dr. Parker squared. Dr. Parker and I are presenting class size waivers for you tonight for Boger Elementary. As you are aware, we have class size caps for kindergarten first and second grade. We monitor these almost daily. As we get toward the end of the year, sometimes we have to make difficult choices. There are a number of things that have played into this, in this very unusual year for hiring. At this time, we have two classes in kindergarten at Boger Elementary, and we have five classes in second grade, and we have six classes in third grade that are slightly over the state caps. And so, Dr. Parker's going to walk you through some of the data around how we came here. One of the things I would, and what we've done, as opposed to hiring more teachers, part of our issue is, when we talk about our youngest children, I look at, where am I in the school year? Do I start pulling off kids three or four from each class and creating a new class, you know, the last quarter of the year? I just don't think that's a good idea. I don't think it's in the best interest of children, so we look for, are there other ways that we can work around this and still do what's right for children? So, we do have these waiver forms, they are ready for the Board Chair, Ms. Adcock's signature, if that is approved by the board, but I'm going to let Dr. Parker go through some backstory that might help you understand how we got here.
All right. Good evening, members of the board. Dr. Kapicki, so, at Boger Elementary, we had quite a few things in play this year. We started to go over the class size going into the fourth quarter, just a fun fact, and it was kind of funny, we just learned about redistricting, and then looked up at that map, and one of the areas where we've seen a pretty big boom is at Boger. So, Boger's increased ADM by 12% since last school year, which is pretty high. What we did was, at the beginning of the school year, Ms. Dawn Rainey, the principal at Boger, she started at Boger, and there were quite a few vacancies during one of our largest teacher shortages in North Carolina. So, she started hiring, and we were doing well at the beginning of the year, and then through changes, what we ended up doing was taking teaching positions and trading them in to hire teacher assistants. So, though we have some larger classes, there have been six teacher assistants that have been hired and have been in place at Boger this entire time. When you walk in, it's a safe, wonderful, happy place, and we've got wonderful TAs that are in each classroom doing interventions, working with students in small groups. Honestly, if you walked in, you may not even notice that, that they are slightly over the cap. And really, the most important thing for us is having highly effective teachers in front of every student, and what we didn't want to do was hire a teacher at the end of the school year and disband a class. Like, that's really hard for a kindergartner, second grader, or third grader to understand why we have to do that. So, in order to not do that, we hired TAs instead, and are making it work for the rest of the year. Wonderful news is that Ms. Rainey and the leadership team at Boger have done a wonderful job with hiring, and she's really close to being almost fully staffed for next year already. So, Boger's where people want to be, so that's wonderful. But we'll take any questions at this time.
I also would share with you, Ms. Adcock and members of the board, that when we talk about kindergarten, the two classes that are over are over by one student each.
Just a little bit.
And the second grade class, we have, two of the classes are over by one, two of the classes are over by two, and one class is over by three. So, we're not talking five, seven children. I want, I want to be clear about that. When we look at the third grade classes, they are over by three or four max. So, that's, that's where we are. And I'll be honest, Dr. Parker and I were talking this afternoon, one of them has dropped below, but somebody will enroll tomorrow.
Yes.
So, this is a daily thing. I'm giving you what it was when I put this together on Friday. But by today, it, it's a moving target, so I can only do a dipstick in the middle, but I want to be clear, we're talking one or two, three kids max. And in kindergarten and second grade, we are really close to those numbers. And so, that's why we're very, very committed to not disbanding a class or disrupting and pulling children out of five classes to make a new class when we're nine weeks from the end of school. We'd rather put those TAs in there and lower them and do small group instruction to go through the end of the year, and then just build new classes that are smaller for the, for the coming school year.
Okay, board members, Mr. Tredaway.
Ms. Escoc, you remember when we visited Boger, that was one of the things, I was, I was not aware of the growth there. That was, that was revealing. But, more revealing was how Ms. Rainey and the staff have done such a great job that's kid-focused in that situation. I'm in full support of putting this on our consent agenda. I'm in full support of putting this on our consent agenda.
Any other questions? Ms. Escobar?
For people who are watching who aren't familiar with the law, can you explain what the caps are? Because it's different in each grade, correct?
It is, it is. So, the kindergarten cap is 18, and you get a plus three, so that's like you're in between. So, we try not to get above 22. And then first grade, it's 16, and the plus three is 19, so we try not to get above that 19. Second grade is 17, we don't want to get above 20, and then third grade is also 17, and we don't want to get above 20.
So, to clarify, when you say one over or two over, are you over the number you don't want to be over?
Correct.
Not the number that's not the first number.
Not the first number.
The second number. The state will let you go up to the second number without a waiver.
Without any waivers.
That's our wiggle room, but once we go over wiggle room, we have to have a state waiver. We're over the wiggle room by one, two kids, in a few of the, not even in all of the classes at each grade level.
13 classrooms.
13 classrooms total out of K3.
And then has, are parents aware of that? Because you go to, so, for example, as a parent, I remember going into fourth grade because, boom, those numbers don't matter anymore, and I was overwhelmed by the number of desks in the classroom. So, parents might not be, if they had a parent-teacher conference in the fall, they might not be thinking about this now. So, what's the notification process? If we go through this waiver, how do we just give them a heads up, like, you have a TA? I mean, just to give them the information.
So, Ms. Rainey's done a really great job with communicating with families, so many families are aware. They know there are TAs assigned to their child's grade level that work with them. I don't know if we've done, like, official notification. We can look into doing that, but mostly it's been, here's the team, here's who's in your class, you know, the way we've typically done it.
Ms. Lindsay.
Well, so, the parent, actually, that was gonna be my question, too. I definitely think that we do need to notify those parents. I also, just out of curiosity, wanted to know, as far as their grades, like, have we noticed that they are on level with everyone else, or are they slightly below because of, you know, class size? I don't, I don't know.
It's pretty similar. You really wouldn't know from classroom to classroom where the overages are, and I think a huge part of that, and I'm gonna preach about our teacher assistants, is having those teacher assistants, honestly, for many teachers, at the beginning, when we went in and asked staff, like, what do we want to do here? Do we want to hire? And they could see the pool, and they were like, you know, we would rather have a larger class and have highly qualified TAs that we can work with and do interventions with our students than have to bring a brand-new teacher along this late in the year. So, part of that was the veteran staff at Boger would have preferred to do it that way. Did I answer your question?
No, it definitely does, but I do think that we have, we should have some sort of communication out to the parents, just to make them aware of the situation, you know, even if we do agree to do this waiver, I just think that they need to know.
Yeah, so, based on the class, our principals do a really good job of communicating that out to the parents of the classes that are impacted, so we will do that, we do do that, and we will make sure that our principals communicate that out. They do a good job of making sure the parents are aware.
Mr. Walter.
Those are good questions by my colleagues, but the board doesn't approve these class size? You need our approval, then it's up to the state to make this decision?
You have to approve us sending the waiver to the State Board. The State Board is the ultimate decision-maker on it. They have approved these when it is this late in the year, when we can show that we don't want to disrupt classes, and it went over at this time of the year. One of the exceptions that are, that is allowed in GS 115C 301 is an unanticipated increase in student population of an individual school in excess of 2% of the average daily membership. This school has had a 12%. So, that's the reason we're asking for the waiver, is that we have an unanticipated 12% gain in this school. So, what happens is, we then create the waivers with the explanation and that we have put TAs in the room, and then this comes to the board, if the board approves it, Ms. Adcock signs them. We then send these to the State Board for the State Board's final approval.
And the State Board meets when? Because this has been going on for a few months. You wouldn't anticipate they say no, but if they say no, then where are we at?
They generally approve them. In a lot of ways, it's a tracking mechanism for the State.
So, it's more a tracking mechanism?
Yeah, it's a tracking mechanism.
Anything else? Because obviously, it's after the fact.
And this is not a school that has ever asked for a waiver before. You can't ask waivers year after year. So, it has to be something that is unique, and which this year was with a 12% growth in the building year over year.
And just to put it in context a little bit, they've had just shy of 70 students enroll since the beginning of the school year.
It's a big increase. Okay, thank you.
Ms. Sandich.
I just want to say a big shout-out to these teachers, like, taking on this load and, you know, not complaining about it. So, Teacher Appreciation Week is coming up. If any teachers need some appreciation, it'd be those down there at Boger, so I just appreciate what they've taken on.
I think, and thank you for that, Ms. Sanders. I think that when they look at it, they see, many veteran teachers, remember, I was a second-grade teacher. It was not uncommon for me to have 30 second graders. And so, when you say to me that I can't have over 20, I'm just like, my goodness, this is heaven. You know, that's just amazing, and then you're gonna give me a TA to work with small groups in there, too. And I'm not minimizing, I think that the small class sizes in those early grades is wonderful, but when we say they're over, we're not, we're not giving them 10 extra kids. That would have been addressed long before now. We're talking, as I said, in kindergarten, two classes have one extra child each. So, yes, kudos to those teachers who did say, no, just give us TAs. We want to keep the kids, we have a relationship with them, we have a relationship with their families, we know where they are, we know what interventions are needed, we just need some extra hands to do interventions, and I think they were making decisions in the best interest of children.
I would second Mr. Tredaway's motion.
Okay, board members, is everybody good to put this on consent for the May 8th Business Session? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move to 6.02, calendars for restart schools, and Dr. Jonathan Bowers. Welcome.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and good evening. Good evening, members of the board, and Dr. Kapicki. Oh, you come on up. All right. So, with me here tonight are the principals of our restart schools. We have Ms. Williams from Concord Middle School, we have Dr. Wells from Bevion Irvin Elementary School, we have Ms. Marsh from Royal Oak School of the Arts, and we have Ms. Butch from Rocky River Elementary School. So, tonight, they will be sharing with you a presentation that highlights some of the successes that they have experienced as a result of participating in the North Carolina restart model. Additionally, they will be presenting to you tonight a proposed restart calendar for your approval that builds an additional early release and professional development days for their respective sites next school year. For those of you who may not be familiar, the North Carolina restart school model allows schools that have traditionally been continually low-performing schools to be able to exercise certain additional flexibilities within their means. These flexibilities are really designed to help improve student outcomes and really improve learner achievements, and certainly be able to kind of sort of re-culture, reshape, and reenorm the efforts of the school itself. One of these flexibilities, obviously, is the means to be able to adjust the school calendar that they have within their respective buildings, and they do so by being able to kind of sort of introduce particular activities that are really designed to meet students' needs. So, I'm gonna turn it over at this point right now to Ms. Marsh, and she and her colleagues will kind of share some data and kind of sort of some successes they've had and some of the experience they've had with restart.
Absolutely. Thank you so much for the opportunity to come and speak with you all tonight about continuing our restart flexibilities for the upcoming school year. Thank you to Dr. Bowers for that wonderful introduction. He stole a little bit of our thunder there. I'd also like to thank members of CCS Cabinet for their support as we have navigated restart for the past several years, as well as Dr. Kapicki. He's always supported our efforts, and of course, you guys, the school board, thank you for approving our calendar restart flexibility for this current school year. We've had that in place this year, and it has been a wonderful impact to our staff and students. So, again, we thank and appreciate you. All right, let's see, what am I doing wrong here? Oh, there it went. All right, so, as Dr. Bauer shared, the restart model is a reform model that's available to low-performing schools by way of application to the state. Once approved, restart schools can have charter-like flexibility, and those flexibilities allow us to do things a little bit differently than a traditional school would, all in the hopes of improving student academic outcomes. And so, the goal of restart is to increase the number of schools that are meeting or exceeding growth, and all the schools represented here are restart schools, and we've been using our flexibilities since we became restart schools five years ago. So, our ask tonight is to continue using those restart flexibilities by way of a couple of things that we're currently using, one being calendar flexibility and the other being staffing flexibility.
All right, so, you will see on this slide, all of our schools, oh, sorry, I didn't realize I hit that button. You will see on this slide, all of our schools last year did meet expected growth, and so we were excited about that. The goal is obviously to exceed growth, and we're super excited to see what our data shows next year, but we did all meet growth, and you can kind of see our indexes there, and that's based off of EVOs, which is the data system that the state uses to identify whether a school meets, exceeds, or does not meet growth. And so, we would like to continue some of the requests. In addition to the calendar flexibility, we would like to include, continue our employment flexibility, where we are able to hire staff who may be outside of their licensure area, and then also continue to use our budget flexibility, which allows us to utilize some budget purchases for instructional items, including professional development for our staff, and I know several of us have even sent teachers from our schools to visit some other schools that have had some great success with similar demographics to our schools, some schools within our county, and then some neighboring schools within some districts close by.
So, our collective request is that we would like to continue the calendar flexibility next school year. The days that we looked, we met together as a team and looked at the calendar, it's already been approved by the board for next year. And then we did suggest, or suggesting to you, that these half-days of August 30th, September 13th, and January 31st, we would like to have those three days again for the next school year. Again, continuing with our regular early-release guidelines, with the elementary schools dismissing at noon, and middle school at 1:00. And then, of course, these days are strictly focused for school-level PD. The calendar that you see in front of us, thanks to Dr. Ward, she did a mock, little prototype, if you approve of these three days, what it would look like. We gave this similar calendar to our schools, and it was in our handbooks, and we gave it to parents on Open House last year when you approved for us to use these restart early release days this school year, so our parents knew immediately what the calendar was for our schools. We did a tremendous job at making sure parents knew the dates, communicated with them throughout the year, a lot leading up to the days, just as reminders, and it worked beautifully this year. So, to piggyback on what we did last year, we have communicated with Boys and Girls Club, we have a great partnership with them. I called them, asking them if they would partnership with this, with us again this year, if the board approves these early-release days. They were immediate, absolutely, we will do anything we can. So, all of our students that currently go to Boys and Girls Club, including the middle school, we have a busload at our school as well, can go straight to the Boys and Girls Club on these early-release days, so there's no worry about where they will go after school when we get out early on these early-release days. The Boys and Girls Club's gonna pick them up and take care of them for our parents. And then, our Kids Plus program, they did the same thing at the elementary schools that had Kids Plus, they operated early for the early-release days as well.
This is me?
That's right.
Okay, so.
I'm sorry, one more. I did say, I would like to say, adding on the collective request, because I think we missed, or jumped around a little bit, but we did survey our staff, so I do want to let you know, the PD that we did at our school sites were so specific to our schools, but yet some of us had some similarities. We were able, these were days that were just for our schools, so our school needs. So, we had multiple schools did some things on behavior management techniques and approaches. We did, several schools did some reconnect for resiliency, which is self-regulation-type strategies for our teachers to know and learn to use with kids if needed. I know at my particular school, one of the days was differential PD for our staff, so we had multiple choices for the staff to choose, and the teachers were leading some of that. So, and that's what we want to see for all of our schools, is specific, and of course, Melody was able to provide some very specific PD for her school around the Arts Plus program. So, it was very specific to each school, looking at our own data and our own needs, and then using that, and I know I surveyed my staff to say, did you feel that these days were beneficial? And it was overwhelming how they, and the comments that they provided about how these, the PD for our schools were so beneficial because it met the needs for our specific school, and I think everyone else would say the same. They surveyed, we all surveyed after each PD, but I did do a collective, and it was great to see that they all want that. That's, again, narrow.
All right. All right, so Richie Wells at Irvin, I told, asked these ladies, I said, I'm still learning about restart, learning about all of the flexibility and the opportunities that we have. I will show up with a smile, and I'll do what you asked me to. They said, can you tell everyone thank you? So, my first thank you is to my colleagues for helping me be successful through what's the equivalent of a trust vault in front of my employers. So, thank you. And then also, thank you for hearing our request. I'm looking forward to learning more about all the flexibility that we can exercise to meet students' needs at our schools. And what questions do you have?
Mr. Walter.
Well, it's actually great to hear some good news, so thank you so much for that presentation. Happy National Principals Day, too. We appreciate your dedication to the students and the staff. I guess my question, did you work with transportation on this ahead of time? Is that already done? Let's take care of.
We've already talked about transportation and S and P.
Okay, I saw the, that part was in the slide, the other one was not, and then you've given me examples of things that you've done, so you do think that this improves student outcomes at your schools? You're pretty confident in that, based on the history of this year? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, so I would say that it is very, the PD that we would do for next year would be very specific based on our data and student needs that we find at the end of the school year, moving in as we plan for the fall, if you approve the calendar. I think it, personally, I think it's very beneficial, because you have staffing changes throughout the year. You're able to analyze, regroup, redirect, sometimes just renew some energy as well as review some strategies, right? It's a perfect time to be able to do that with your school, and it's also a great time when you have, I know middle school hours are hard sometimes to get everybody together with athletics, I'm speaking specific here, but it's a great time to have the whole school together, and you can have that true school-wide collaboration when it comes across some learning outcomes for the school, and that was very beneficial, and the feedback that I received from my school was very positive on that.
And I would also say that with the elementary schools, they were working on their letters training on most of the capped workdays, the early-release days that we had this school year, so a lot of their professional development time was taken up with that, and so finding time for that school-level PD was really hard if we did not have these three half-days. So, looking forward to next year, having those three dedicated half-days at our school sites will keep us from, you know, keeping teachers after school for several hours to do a needed PD whenever, you know, they're already tired from the school day.
Thank you.
Mr. Farr.
Yeah, thanks for the presentation, and it's good to see results, and, you know, it's truly, y'all are outstanding at what you do, and this is, this is an easy one, so consent.
Ms. Escobar.
I would just say, thank you. It's nice to know that the board, the previous board granted this before without knowing that, and now we have results for that, so I appreciate that. And I just wanted to ask the thought process for Wednesday. I noticed that all three of the days are Wednesdays. I'm guessing that's because people usually are all at work on Wednesday, but I just wanted to confirm my thought process.
We, that's what we did this past year. We tried to get the middle of the week. First of all, we want to make sure that everybody realizes we're not just taking these half-days just to be free, right? But at the same time, it's easier for parents to know what the week looks like, and then we have time to remind ahead of time as well, so there's no, like, oh goodness, there's early-release day. We have multiple days to let parents know of that and remind them of those days as well.
Any other questions? Okay, or is everybody okay to put this on consent for May 8th? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move to 6.03 in our Budget Amendment Number 007, summary of change and fund with Ms. Carol Herndon. Welcome.
Good evening, board. I can hardly believe that this is the next-to-the-last budget amendment for 2022, 2023, but in fact, I'm bringing forth to you number seven. The final one will be- The final one will be presented at the end of June as we wrap up our year-end processes. There isn't a lot of activity in Budget Amendment 007. Right now, we are managing a total budget across all funds of $480.6 million, and in this amendment, only looking at about $411,000 of change. And almost all of that change happened in Fund 8, our special revenue fund, which includes donations, grants, contributions to our district, and the majority of that change related to the recording of indirect cost that we are allowed to charge to our federal programs for managing administratively the work that it takes to comply with all the federal rules and regulations. So not a lot of activity, short and sweet, this Budget Amendment 7, and I'm happy to answer any questions, and we'll look forward to bringing the final one at the end of June.
Any questions, board members? Okay, so we'll put this on the consent agenda for May 8th. Thank you. We'll move to 6.04, the Furniture Vendor Recommendation with Mr. Brian Cohn.
Evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. This past March, we issued the request for qualification for the fixture, furniture, and equipment package for the new R. Brown McAllister Elementary School project. We had seven firms submit statements of qualification to us that were interested in being part of that project. We subsequently, in April, interviewed all seven of those firms virtually with an internal review committee. That committee was made up of Ms. Jessica Blanchard, Ms. Tiffany Nickel, Mr. Tim Louder, Mr. Craig Nichols, Ms. Dorothy Bramhall, Mr. Harold Hahn, and then myself. That includes school staff, facility staff, and then the construction department staff. It is our recommendation that we enter into an agreement to work with New Idea as the fixture, furniture, and equipment vendor for the new R. Brown McAllister project. Just so you know, New Idea is the firm that provided the furniture package for Roberta Road Middle School. Just going forward, the value of this package does require public bidding. To satisfy this requirement, New Idea will operate under the cooperative purchasing contract where the items have been publicly bid. The total budget for the FFND package is $975,000. Not all of these funds will be allocated for the furniture vendor because there are other items that have to be purchased. Those, for example, are custodial equipment, athletic equipment, and then site amenities like trashcans and benches. So we'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions, Ms. Sandage?
It's, we've only used them one time prior to this?
We have, yes, ma'am.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Any of the other vendors we've used also?
Yeah, of the seven, so the seven vendors were New Idea, Meteor, Verco, School Specialty, Lakeside Learning, Office Environments, and Learning Environments. And I believe, Mr. Walters, we've utilized Meteor and School Specialties previously.
Satisfied with them, too, at the time?
We were satisfied, but we, we had challenges, I mean, you have, you have challenges on every project, but New Idea did an excellent job for us on Roberta Road Middle School.
Thank you.
Anything else, Ms. Lindsay?
I thought I recognized the name when I saw that on there, so I, I really love the way that they did Roberta Road.
Very creative team that they have to bring on board for this project.
Yeah, I agree.
Just in the interest of time, I did provide a copy of their presentation that is attached to the agenda item, if you would like to review that, if you have any questions after doing that, feel free to ask.
Okay, if there aren't any further questions, are you okay, Board, to put this on the consent agenda for the May 8th meeting? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we will move to 6.05, and this is our continued discussion and recommendation of legal firm. Board members, we had some additional information that was sent to us, and I wanted to see if there is any discussion about the information that you received or any other questions that you may have. Ms. Escobar.
I just wanted to discuss conflict of interest because one of our school board members asked that question at our last meeting, and I thought it was interesting tonight that our council was talking about how that's going to be required for school board members. I will say that when I became a member of the board, I was required to have that training, and so I did go to Raleigh and have that. So I just wanted to explain that conflict of interest, the legal definition, is complicated, and I'm not going to pretend that I'm a lawyer, but ultimately, it's important for people to understand that if a board member would have, would benefit financially from a contract, that's when there's a, a conflict of interest, at least that's what I understood it to be. And I have confirmed that definition. But for full transparency for the public, if they're just concerned or interested, I did just want to explain that one of the lawyers that presented last week, I do know outside of this building, he is a coach of one of my daughter's teams, and when I was having a conversation with someone about how I know them, it made me think to look and confirm if anybody had given me donations. And I did confirm that, that lawyer did donate to, to my campaign last year in May during a raffle that I had at one of my events, which was over, slightly over $50. So I just wanted you to be aware of that, just so that you have that information for full transparency. I will also say that for my campaign, I raised 10, a little over $10,000. So you can just understand where that falls in, in my contributions, or the contributions to my campaign. And I would also like to reiterate to the public that it's very, this decision is very important, and I would never make a decision about something like this based on a campaign contribution. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer that, but I wanted to give that information to my board members just so that they understand where I am.
Any questions, board members?
No.
Can I make a comment? Ms. Lindsay.
I just want to say thank you. Thank you for being transparent and open about that, that is just awesome, so thank you.
Okay, is there any other discussion about any questions or information about the two firms that we've selected so far? Okay, hearing none, we can move this to the action agenda for vote now, or we can do it at the May 8th business session. What is the pleasure of the board?
May 8th, based on information. Sorry, May 8th, just, I mean, I don't know if the public has any comments or input, but we do have a public comment period every month, and I'd like to hear the public's comment if there is any prior to voting for these firms, unless it's an emergency.
Ms. Escobar.
I would be open to it tonight, I, I would ask if we could get the recommendation from our staff based on their review of, of the materials that we have also received.
Is there anybody else that would not want to do it tonight that's here?
The only thing is, is, this is just my thought on it, and it's not because of not necessarily knowing where I stand on this, but we just got these questions back today, and to be quite honest with you, like, I literally have not had a chance to go through everybody's comments and responses to those. But to be, I'm, I'm totally fine to do whatever the board decides to do, whatever the majority decides to do.
I, I agree with what Ms. Lindsay just said, I also agree with what Rob has said as well, with allowing for our public to comment, should there be any.
Okay, so I'm going to ask Mr. White, can you come up to the podium for just a minute? Since this is...
Yes, ma'am.
Since this is a consent, is, it would be three to four, so three noes to wait and do it next time, and then three, four people that say to vote, so how does that play out since this was not on the action agenda?
You've adopted the agenda for this to be item for consent or action at the May 8th, 2023 business meeting, so if you want to vote on this tonight, then you'd have to amend the agenda from what, the way it is presented now.
And to amend the agenda, we have to have a two-thirds vote?
Yes.
Which would be 5-2, right?
Yes.
Okay. Since you're up there, what, what is your thought on us waiting until May the 8th? Because I know that your contract ends on May the 9th. So do you think that it's going to be an issue if we waited? Or do you think the transition can happen seamlessly regardless as to what night we do it? Sorry.
First off, I have no idea who y'all have talked about as the bottom, but I show that what happens is, I don't know if they're local, I don't know if they're out of state, I don't, I mean, out of the county, I don't know if they're prepared to start immediately. And the reason why I say that is Mr. Vogel, last time, talked about two matters. The one matter is the week of May the 8th, another matter is the week of May the 15th, I think. I know that there, I was asked today about some advice on May the, that impacts the schools about teachers on May the 10th, and I told, and then also on June the 1st. So I know that the matters that, that I'm involved, you know, you can, you can take care, you can pick them up and deal with it, I just don't know how they're going to do it. What I mean by that is, the, May the 10th is a, teacher's been subpoenaed. What I have done in the past is I have prepped, I have met with, I have spoken to, and I've attended the court hearing with the teacher to make certain that they're taken care of. I don't know if the new attorneys are going to do that. It wouldn't be that hard to do that, I've also been able to either excuse the, the teachers or I've been able to have the teachers put on standby so that it doesn't affect their school, I mean, affect their teaching. I don't know if the new attorneys are going to do that. Whether they start on May the 9th, or they smart, start tonight, or whenever, I don't, again, I don't know who they are to, to say, are they prepared to hit the ground running? I know that last year, or two years ago, Mr. Vogel and I were ready to hit the ground running, and we had already reached out through the attorneys, we had already spoken to Mr. Shaw, and sort of laid the groundwork as to what needs to be done. So I know that's not an answer, but it all depends on who it is. And I don't know what they're, I would imagine they are professional enough to be able to pick up a lot of that work. I just don't know how their implementation of how they're going to serve the teachers on a day-to-day basis.
I would just add, I'd like to think that our law firm is still in the running until the board votes. We like to consider that we are still in the running. But if the board chooses to wait until next week in order to give the public an opportunity to comment, and therefore we have to make a transition very soon thereafter, if that comes to be, we're professional enough to make that transition very soon thereafter, including the next day if, if possible, and confident that the other law firms that are in the running, like our law firm, would also be professional to make that transition quickly.
Can I say something? I just think that one day or seven days is, is not, I mean, it could be, it's tomato-tomato, in my opinion. Either way, it's going to be up to an attorney picking up the work, either way we look at it, whether it's today or tomorrow.
Right.
That's my thoughts, I don't know if y'all think something different.
It shouldn't be that difficult, it's just, it just depends. I, I don't know if that's about Mr. Vogel, but I haven't been reached out by either firm to say, hey, what have you got in the hopper, what's coming up soon, so that at least I know what on my schedule is. And, and I stand ready to serve the board, whether it's after that or not, if, if it needs to be able to help out these teachers, that, you know, that's fine.
So you can do work without a contract necessarily, or you have to?
I've done it before, and I would, I would, my role, excuse me, my role is to make certain our, this school board is taken care of, and whatever that role is.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
And in full-on blown transparency, allowing for the public to be able to comment on this huge decision that we are getting ready to make, I think, you know, checkbox for me. So that's why I agree with you, Rob.
Okay, board members, since there won't be a no, I don't think that if we took a vote, we would have the capacity to add this, we're just going to go ahead and move this to consent agenda. So everybody okay to move this to consent to May 8th?
It needs to be an action item, action item, we'll just first vote on.
Okay.
Yeah.
I need a motion for us to put this on the consent agenda for, to vote action.
I don't think we need any motion. It's just consensus of the board to, to go to the action agenda, so that's what will be done on May the 8th.
So we don't need to vote to do that?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Walter. Do you want to say it?
Do you need me to make that?
Yeah, go ahead, say it.
To the next one?
No. So can I, can we, I get a consent to put this on the action agenda for May 8th?
Sure, I mean, add it to the action agenda, please.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll move to 7.01, and we will call for a motion to go into a convening closed session to consult with an attorney, preserve the attorney-client privilege pursuant to General Statute 143, 318, 11A3, and to consider confidential personnel matters pursuant to General Statute 143, 318, 11A6. I need a motion to convene in closed session. So move.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Lindsay and a second by Ms. Escobar. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are now in closed session.